The meeting on the committee as a whole comes to order. We have, if you could just call your own name out. Estella, I will start with you.
What was that?
Call your name.
Your name, call your own name.
My name?
Yes, it's my voice.
Did you call my name Estella? You want me to repeat my name?
Repeat it.
Okay, Estella Reyes.
The full name.
No, let's have the clerk.
The clerk wants to do it?
Let's do the role. Go ahead.
See, I didn't want to give you any extra work.
You're here anyway, so.
Counsel Vasquez.
Present.
Counsel LaPlante.
Here.
Counsel Toomey.
Yeah.
Counsel Reyes.
Estella Reyes, yes. That's what she said.
Counsel Estella Reyes.
Yes.
District B. Counsel Kino.
Present.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Monte.
I was just skipping over.
I missed. I'm looking. It's the seat.
Yes, you're very quiet today.
Counsel Brunel.
Present.
Counsel, uh, Counsel President.
Present.
Counsel Chair, Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Okay, we're all present. Um, I want to call the, uh, public hearing. Uh, would you read the notice, please?
Document 177, 2014, before the Lawrence Subcommittee on, of the whole council. Notice hereby given the Committee of the Whole, for the city Lawrence City Council, at the direction of the city council, will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 30th, in council chambers, 200 Clement Street, 7:30 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence by adding the following new chapter to municipal code in proper numerical order. Chapter 2.74 of municipal code, Department of Business and Economic Development, establishing several code citations provided by the city attorney, establishing, uh, the department, the composition of that department, the employees of that department, and citing in addition a number of deletions, additions, changes, and other items to be included in the proposed new department configuration. A copy of the summary was provided by publication on June 22nd. A complete and unabridged copy of the measures referenced in the advertisement were made available to the public to be copied and examined upon request, presented at the office of city clerk any business day during the hours of 8:30 AM and 4:30 PM. Copies of the proposed ordinances were also able to be viewed on the city Lawrence website as posted and located on that website, under the public hearing section of the city council portion of the website. Any determination of the committee on the whole shall be reported to the Lawrence City Council members upon direction of the committee of the whole for further and final consideration of approval pursuant to applicable provisions of Section 8 regarding administrative organization of Lawrence City charter persons, which need be heard, shall be afforded the opportunity.
Okay, the public hearing is open, and if there are any members of the public who like to speak, please speak now. Okay, if there's no one available to speak, only the portraits, they're all moving. The public hearing comes to a close. What I'd like to do before we proceed, because we don't have the minutes of the last committee as a whole meeting, I would, I asked, um, Dr. Parks to come up and go over quickly what are some of the revisions that have been made, and then we can enter into a full discussion. Okay?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, so thank you again for the opportunity to speak before you about what's being proposed as far as a reorganization that will ultimately result in the Office of Planning and Development. So the genesis of how this came about is, as a city, how can we best serve the community and the primary stakeholders, particularly in areas that help really drive the economic development engine of the city? And that includes everything from the building, um, from the building permit issuance to the community development-related programming that gets done, as well as the business assistance and support that we could provide to both the small businesses and the larger businesses that we're trying to attract as well. Um, and thinking about how we could be most efficient in providing that service, it was to bring those four departments together, which currently is operating all very independently. So that includes inspectional services, includes planning, it includes community development, and it also includes economic development. The thought is that, um, the type of work that each of these different departments do have an overlap, and it makes most sense when they're done in a coordinated way. Um, so, and while we individually may not quite view the work that we do as economic development, they very much are, in fact, economic development. So when businesses need assistance, they may not necessarily think that city is an entity that they could go to for support, but at the same time, they will go to the inspection services department for the building permits. Yet at the same time, there may be a array of other services that could also be brought to bear to actually help that business grow and thrive in the city, ultimately creating job opportunities for the residents as well. So we do think that everything from the code enforcement side, where we create a community that's vibrant, that's safe, to the kind of businesses that could also provide, um, much-needed services and amenities to the residents, as well as, um, the daytime population of employees and others as well, it all should work seamlessly. So the notion of the Office of Planning and Development is to bring all those together so that that does happen. Now, it does require some ordinance changes, and I know that we provided you with many different documents, and I hope that, for the most part, the information that was provided to you will, um, provide the appropriate background for it. But just to summarize very succinctly is that, so it ultimately involves an umbrella of, um, Department, the Office of Planning and Development. It would also involve the creation of that, well, two departments. One, which is Office of Planning and Development, and the secondary, second one being the Business Office of, um, the Department of, uh, Business and Economic Development. In addition, there are going to be some title changes to basically, um, to more clearly identify the title with associated responsibilities. And so they include everything from the planning director position that I currently serve in, which will now become the Director of Officer Planning and Development, changing what is currently the Economic Development Director position to the Business and Economic Development Director position, um, the Commissioner of Inspection Services to the Director of Inspection Services to distinguish what that position would do separately from what the building commissioner would be doing. And, um, the last title change, I believe, is the one where, um, a position that's within the planning department, which is the Property Acquisition Disposition Officer, would be reclassified as Asset Officer to, again, more accurately reflect the activities and the job description that person would be responsible for. Separately, there are a number of supervisory changes that will happen whereby we're reallocating the staff resources to place them under the supervision of the folks that, again, um, most closely align with the work that they do. So one, which is where the, um, I could give you all of them, or I could just give you an illustration, which is the Economic Development Project Officer, which is currently under the Community Development, would be transferred over to, um, Business and Economic Development, because, um, the work again is very aligned. And then the last item is, the last type of change is, um, the approval of, um, of the position of the grant writer, which currently doesn't exist, um, in the organization, and also just fought for the council to approve the community health worker position. So that, in summary, sort of tries to encapsulate sort of the very detailed information that is, um, in the organizational revisions that was provided to you at earlier time.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Parks. Now, the, um, current ordinances that would be deleted in, in order to give way to this new reorganization, um, would be the Chief Economic Development Officer, um, Business and Economic Development Director, Business and Economic Development Director, Salary and Benefits, these are ordinances. Still Business, that's Part C, which talks about the qualifications, um, and then there are the proposed ordinances, which include the, uh, position of grant writer, a community health worker, Director of Planning, Commissioner of Inspection Services, and there will be a Director of Inspection Services. And the, another current ordinance that would be deleted would be the Director of Community Development. But then it says, proposed ordinance, Director of Community Development. All right, so I open now, oh, the Asset Officer is another different, um, type of ordinance, and deleted would be the Property Acquisition or Disposition Officer, which we often, I think that's Dan McCarthy, isn't it?
No, Dan McCarthy is the land use planner, that current position is currently vacant.
Okay, it's currently vacant, Asset Officer. An Administrative Assistant is deleted. Then there's Administrative Assistant for Business and Economic Development. A Neighborhood Planner would be deleted. A proposed, another Neighborhood Planner, which I think the description of the work and qualifications are would differ. All right, Manager of Financial and Administrative Services, that's a new one, too. Am I missing anyone?
Chief Economic Development.
Chief Economic Development Officer, that would be deleted. And will become Business and Economic Development Director. Okay, those are, those are basically the, um, what's being proposed in terms of deletions in ordinances and new ordinances. So, um, I open up for discussion. Any questions, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counsel Brunel has the floor.
Thank you. Um, I support the, um, reorganization, and I think it has definitely the potential to have many good benefits, both for the city and its management, and also for our constituents trying to use the services of the city. One of the things we talked about at our last meeting, and I don't think we really resolved the issue, so I was just thinking, um, I just want to re-raise the issue. If you look at the beginning of your packets, the one that Counselor, um, the other kind of Counselor, um, our city clerk Maloney had given us, look at page three on there. It talks about the Chief Economic Development Officer, as formally written, and then it has it now on page four as it's to be written. We talked about this for a little bit at the last meeting. It currently reads that that position is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, and it serves at the pleasure of the mayor, which means if a new mayor comes in, they can bring in their own person, which is kind of the whole situation we just had with the guy with the settlement. The position as rewritten doesn't say those things. It doesn't say appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, and it doesn't say, um, it, I just wanted to clarify, was that what our intention was? And if it is, we should modify this to include that language?
A motion was actually made.
Well, I remember that, yes, that we did make a motion to include language, which said to be confirmed.
To be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council.
Confirmed by the council. That each.
So I just want to make sure that that happened. I don't know that it didn't.
I don't know, I haven't. I don't think it happened for everyone.
Well, that one was the one that was missing it.
I checked.
Because this was the only one that missed.
So this is just with regard to Section 2.74, 4.030.
It's in here.
It's in the new one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Serve at the pleasure of the mayor, doesn't say.
Appointed by the.
Doesn't.
What is it?
Confirmed by the city council.
Where's that?
2120080, Chief Economic Development Officer. Establishing officer of the mayor to position of Chief Economic Development Officer to be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council.
Okay, so I, my question is.
That's the one that's to be deleted.
If I look at page four in that same packet.
He's talking about the one that be deleted.
Counsel, one more time?
He's talking about the one that is going to be deleted.
Oh, no, it's not in the.
In the proposed ordinance.
Page four, it's not there.
On page four, the proposed ordinance, I don't see it, and I'm looking at page 38.
And it was not included.
So this is, what?
You're right.
If I may interject for a moment?
It is?
No, it wasn't.
So this, I believe this is our third meeting of the, um, the committee of the whole, and I think there are some additional documents that were provided, and one of the documents, I believe at the second meeting, was this chart that Frank Renee, our HR Director, had put together. And what that, um, chart illustrates is that, in fact, that position does require approval by the city council, and I think that was one of the types of information that this chart was meant to show. So I think we started with this document, and then we progressed with additional information on this, and it may very well be that there is a revised draft that was actually incorporating that information, but that absolutely isn't.
But this was sent down by the city attorney who was supposed to give us language.
Actually, you know what? In fairness, Counsel LaPlante was kind of on the right. If you look at page 36 in the package.
Page what?
Page 36. It's just confusing because page four never got changed, but 36 says, I attached the revision to the proposed language as requested, and then if you look at 38, it is the proposed, same exact thing, except for now it is.
So this was specifically done to, you know, shake our sanity or something?
Oh, it is, there it is. I see, page 38 is what you're looking for.
So what it really should say, though, it's almost right, it should say, um, because this is what we talked about last time, it should say, the position of the Business and Economic Development Director, to be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, period. The Business and Economic Development Director shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor, period. Like, it's, he kind of mixed two, because it doesn't say he shall serve at the appointment of the mayor upon compersion. At the pleasure of the mayor implies the length of the term. So you got two concepts mixed into one sentence.
Well, I think, how was it, it was specific to us.
Yeah.
That anyone that was appointed by the council.
Previously will still be appointed. This was the only one that was wrong.
No, but then, in, if the mayor wanted to terminate, it had to also come before the council.
Right.
So is that not included in here? Because then, then that's an issue.
I think that's understood. I think we're talking about, at least, I'm talking about apples.
Because he told, because the city attorney told me that this was understood, but I still wanted it included specifically. I wanted the language included.
Okay, we've got three different things going on here. One is the concept of being appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. I'd like that spelled out in those words, not, and then who shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor, that means when the mayor's term ends, that appointment also ends unless the new mayor chooses to, like Mr. Barnes, he was continued with the new mayor. He could have been terminated with the old, you know, but he was extended because the next mayor wanted him, and then the next mayor wanted him. Hopefully that is what would happen. But it should read, the position of the Business and Economic Development Director to be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, period. And then it should say, the Business and Economic Development Director shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor, period.
I agree with that. Do you make that as a formal motion?
Yeah, I make that modification.
At the pleasure of the mayor? I'm looking for.
Shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
What page are you in?
I'm looking at page 38.
That implies that the mayor can terminate the person without input from the council.
Okay.
Right now, any position that is appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council requires a two-third majority vote to remove.
To remove by the council.
And there's no language here on there.
Because. I can provide some clarity, if you mind. I can provide some clarity, if you mind.
Yeah.
So I think that the confusion is, we're not trying to change the whole ordinance.
Right, mhm.
We're just trying to change, on that specific position, we're actually just trying to change the name and the reporting.
Right.
And so it will always be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, and because it's appointed under 72A, you have to be let go under 73B, I think it's called. However.
Okay.
When the mayor leaves, the next mayor has the right to just let them go.
Without coming back to us.
Not the current mayor. The current mayor is stuck with the person until, with, needs a vote from the city council. But the new mayor, because it's co-terminus, they don't have a right to stay unless the new mayor says, yeah, I do want him.
Is that what is?
Because we're not changing the whole ordinance.
I didn't understand that to be the situation. Which is why I thought there was a run at the end of the 2010 administration to get some people appointed, they never thought of getting appointed before then, because they thought that then they would stay.
Right, but he didn't, if you don't get appointed, that's exactly, you automatically get terminated at the end of that mayoral term.
Right.
No, what happened there was that the council didn't.
Right.
Approve the appointment.
Right, so the minute that that mayor is gone, those appointments are gone, too.
And again, I'd like to thank Counsel Maldonado, because he was the one that had us put this thing, this piece together.
Can you?
And so if you look at this long sheet, I don't know if you have a copy?
I don't have it with me.
You don't have it with you?
We can have it.
The idea with that, it's on page two, I believe, uh, number 22. The real thing for us is we're changing, the two big things, at least the way I see it, is we're changing the title and we're moving the person. So right now, it lives in this, in the mayor's office, and what has happened in the past is that it's been a big distraction for that person being in that office, because you get cut off in the everyday of running the city. So we're moving that underneath the other organizations together so they have the other result, which is better communication and organization. At the same time, we're changing the name because we want the focus not just to be economic development, it's kind of like fuzzy, we want it to be business development as well. But everything else should stay the same, which is appointed by the mayor.
Confirmed by the.
Co-terminus with the mayor, but also terminated by the city council.
It was never my understanding that it was co-terminus with the mayor. But then again, you know.
That's what the current, the current ordinance says, that it's co-terminus with the mayor. But it's weird, because it's, it has both things. It's co-terminus with the mayor, but if I want, if the mayor wanted to fire before the four years are up, they need a vote of the city council. But you need a vote of the city council to be appointed.
See, that's why it sounds to me like if you say to serve at the pleasure of the mayor, means the mayor can let go of the person if they are not pleased.
Yeah, it's, it's a.
At the time.
It's like, you're okay, as long as the mayor that appoints is there, and then till the mayor, and then that mayor leaves, the next mayor can remove you.
So let's say that you have a council who believes that, this is just for the sake of discussion, that this reorganization is the ideal way to go.
Yeah.
You know, four years may not be enough to show the benefits of a plan.
Yeah.
It may take longer than that, you know?
Well, I think about it, go ahead.
And, and so if you get rid of the people who make it happen, then, and every time you're going to start reorganizing with each new mayor, I think it'd be a nightmare.
I agree with you. And so I, that's why we don't choose to change almost anything in that ordinance, except the name and where it reports to, um, because we know that that's the case. But right now, the person who's serving in that position is Abel Vargas. If he does a bang-up job, great job, and I only hit four years. When I leave, the ordinance is meant, the spirit of the ordinance is that when the next mayor come in, they can choose their own business development person.
Okay.
That always already exists, and we expect that to continue. Now, in the middle of this four years, I get into a fight with Abel, and I don't think he should be there, I have to come before you and get six votes to fire him.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Okay.
And I haven't been liking his ties lately, so.
If people are content with that, then.
I like it.
You do like it.
So I just like that a little bit.
There is.
That's the way it should be.
Yeah, I think I made that motion.
Okay, um, so Counsel Brunel still has the floor.
There was a motion.
I just want to be clear that I have a motion on the floor to modify the language so that it's going to read, um.
And who seconded that?
That there's established in the Business and Economic Development Department of the Office of Planning and Development, the position of Business and Economic Development Director to be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, period. Then it's going to say, the, that term was, the Business and Economic Development Director shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor, period. To, so that it stays consistent with what used to be there, and then after that, um, so then that second upon confirmation by the city council is going to come out, and then just goes back to what's already, the Business and Economic Development shall, in conjunction with the policies, procedures, blah, 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 everything else is going to stay the same.
Yeah, this needs to be better organized, though. You can't have something on page six and then page 38.
Well, that's the way the city attorney sent it.
Right, so we may have to do a little bit better. I don't know who is actually going to take care of this now that the city attorney is not available to us for a while.
We can ask, we would ask somebody.
We have other attorneys in that office.
The mayor and I have already discussed that, and.
Oh, okay.
It will be taken care of.
I'd like to know how that's being taken care of, but I haven't gotten an answer on that yet. And word to the city attorney?
Well.
If I can, Mr. President. I would love to talk about that, I just am concerned about time and the matter in front of us, and I think they're a little bit not, there's disinterest in that, they, um, one does not rely on the other, but I'd be glad to stick around after the vote and have a conversation about the status of the city attorney's offices, as much as the counsel president and I have discussed.
Well, I just want clarity on who's going to handle this. We can talk about the other stuff.
Yes, we will.
We'll make sure it's staffed.
Okay.
There's a motion.
There's a motion on the floor? Any more discussion?
That's exactly twice.
Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes, right? For the amendment. Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, uh, we.
Counsel President.
When we approved the budget, we have removed, from the organization, the, we have removed a building inspector.
Right.
And the reorganization needs to reflect that.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So is that a formal motion?
Yes, I, I make the motion that we remove a building inspector from the reorganization based on the approval of the fiscal year budget 2015.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Second.
There's a second discussion?
Discussion. I just want to make sure that that's accurate. I know that, I recall exactly what you're speaking of, I just, well, this is.
The, um, the reality is that the position's ordnanced, and since we didn't fund it, it doesn't exist, so it doesn't exist in the, you've already done that by cutting out the funding. But by all means, you could take the vote, that's fine.
Okay, just to.
You'll say that way.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. All right, roll call. That's okay.
On the amendment to remove one building inspector, motion by Counsel President Maldonado, seconded by Counsel Kino. Counsel Vasquez.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante.
No.
Counsel Toomey.
No.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Monte.
Yes.
Counsel Kino.
Yes.
Counsel Brunel.
Yes.
Counsel President.
Yes.
Maldonado, and Counsel Vice President.
Yes.
72.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go on.
I, I just want to make this statement, okay, in, in hope that in the next three years, uh, the administration can look at this reorganization and hopefully accomplish what reorganizations are supposed to do. And let me mention what I believe a reorganization should do. A reorganization should improve quality of services and efficiency, and I believe that that's going to be accomplished. A reorganization, uh, creates greater accountability. A reorganization, uh, creates greater accountability, and I believe that's gonna happen. A reorganization consolidates services. I question whether that's gonna happen or not, and, and again, I'm making the statement because I would like the administration to look at it, uh, through the next three years and see whether services will actually be consolidated. A, a reorganization is supposed to reduce redundance, duplication of effort, and reduce personnel. And again, that is not happening, because we are increasing, uh, personnel. I'm not sure whether we are reducing redundance or duplication of effort, but, uh, that is something that the administration, again, should look at. And finally, a reorganization should reduce cost, and, and this reorganization is not reducing costs, it's increasing cost, okay? So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the administration is going to look at the objectives of reorganization in, in light of, in light of, of those objectives, and hopefully, in two or three years, you can come back to us and, and give us additional recommendations on how we can accomplish all those things. Um, so, uh, besides that, I would like to make a motion that, be, if you look at, if you look at this, none of the positions, none of the positions, uh, state that there's gonna be an evaluation, because none, none are evaluated, okay? Uh, and I would like to make a motion to make sure, I would like to make a motion that the evaluation process is included for every position in the reorganization.
Second.
I think that was something that, that we did discuss, but.
Yes, yes, really, but I want to make it as a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, a discussion?
Point of inquiry, please. On this sheet of paper, there is a column that says evaluated by, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, but, yes.
But an actual tool.
There's, actually, we don't have a process. We don't have a tool.
He gave us some tools last.
They gave us a, a sample of, a sample of a possible tool, but we don't, we don't have it in place, so my motion is to make sure that it happens, that we create a tool, that we create a tool, that we put a tool in place, and that every personnel in the reorganization is evaluated.
So you're saying that what he gave us last time, is, is it appropriate?
When we, no, no, it's not that it's, it's not appropriate, it, this was given to us as, as a, as a sample of what could be used.
So this is what.
This one.
They're not using this, though?
Yes.
They're not using it?
No, it's not been used. No, this is a sample, am I correct?
I could clarify, yeah.
Yes, okay, so this is a sample. So basically, my motion is to make sure that the administration develops a tool that is gonna be used, okay, for evaluating every member of the, or every personnel in the reorganization, that, that's the motion, okay?
Discussion, madam.
No, not necessarily this, they, they will come up with the, with the evaluation tool.
Um, if, eh, pardon, uh, Council Tumi, you have the floor, but for one second, I'd like to allow the mayor to, to interject.
I actually do totally welcome this, and I would actually encourage you to make, um, as part of the motion, that we use the document in front of you.
That we use this?
Yeah, because we'll, we'll implement it.
Okay.
We, we feel very strongly that, you know, making sure that we, uh, review people's performance and hold them to the.
Are there any changes that need to be made?
That's been sitting around, I, that's been reviewed, like, since two administrations back, I think it's good to go. And, and the reason why I say that is because the, your vote goes a long way, so then when we go to the non-union people, we can go, because we got a mandate from the council, and then when we go to negotiations, it'll be the first thing on the list, we need to implement this of the things that we want in the bargaining table. So I would appreciate the.
To me, we'll, uh, we'll add that this tool be used as part, as the evaluation.
Do you still want to second it on that? Okay, so we adopt this, this has a, Ms. Parks, doesn't this have a three, six, and a year? Is that what it is? Well, we, we discussed in the last meeting that the evaluation process went until a three months, six months, and a year evaluation, is that correct?
Three months and one.
I think the idea is this from evaluation process, for us to internally look at, sort of, as, as we go through the reorganization process, being able to sort of self-reflect, so that we can make those kinds of improvements, and also to make sure that we adhere to some of the goals that we hope to identify that we could, we could reach, and where there may be any kind of deficiencies, to try to, uh, meet those gaps, if that's what you're referring to.
Right, well, I know there's gonna be.
As far as the.
New people coming on board. Um, what is the probationary period in?
It's six months.
It's six months?
Correct, yes, six months.
So then it's six months to a year, there will be no three month?
Um, well, I think that's sort of, that's something that I would think, that as a person starts their position, that they will be getting regular feedback in the beginning, so that they, so we can make sure that they're performing to the expectations. But I think on a more formal process, that, that there is that probationary period, at which point, and they're reviewed to make sure that they perform to the standards that's expected of them.
And I also think it would make sense to have a three month, especially since you're testing your reorganization.
And we could certainly look at that, and we could talk, work with the HR director to sort of, um.
Okay, so if that's okay, I would like to see the three months, six months, then the year.
A lot of evaluations.
Yeah.
It's too much.
She says.
You're as.
That works.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I thought.
She says that works.
So you're asking that in the, uh, to add that to my motion?
Um, well, she said that it's doable, but I guess you could add it to, if you like.
That we add a, uh, three months?
Three months, because then you're keeping an eye on the, how the reorg is moving along.
So every year at three months?
No, 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 not every year.
But this is the first year.
This is only initially.
Okay, first year.
Initially, three months, six months.
So the motion will add that, in addition, uh, three, six, one-year evaluation, only for the first year.
For the first year.
Good.
Yeah, not every year.
And I might add, I think that is a good motion, because I think in the very beginning, we're gonna have to really focus closely on, on how we're utilizing our resources, including our staff.
Yeah. Councilor LaPlante?
Thank you. Sometimes we forget what's on our books already. We already have a classification plan in our administrative code, that's supposed to be doing exactly what you're talking about here, and it talks in great detail about what the personnel director is required to do with respect to any kind of ordinance positions and doing a re, a classification, essentially a review. Um, and so we, I'm not sure when the last time we've had this done, but it's an umbrella review that goes beyond just what this would be doing, it should be happening, frankly, citywide. I don't know the last time this has happened, it didn't happen the last four years, and, and I wasn't around to talk about when that happened beforehand, but I do, so anyway, we already have language in there, so as we go forward on this, I'm not saying that we can't make it more precise, and that's what the council president's amendment is attempting to do, and I think that's to be lauded, but my, my sense is that if we haven't been doing it now, we should be doing it for all the positions, not just this one, or these positions within this one, because there may be other positions in the city that we may not be needing, uh, we haven't had a reclassification in years, or a classification plan in years. I'll stop there.
Well, we did have one in 2000, what was it, six? That's what, um.
Am I solo?
The HR person, yeah, 2006, I believe, was the reclassification that he brought forward. Um, but just to, to follow, uh, Councilor LaPlante's thread of thought, I know that that was something that I had discussion with, uh, council president about, and also the, uh, chair of personnel, if, um, need some caffeine for her, but, um, basically, we have discussed the need for implementing a full evaluation process for everyone in the city. At this moment, though, we want to stick to the reorganization and just try to see how it's moving along, um, and use that, test, test this tool with it, and perhaps this could become the very tool we use to do what we're supposed to be doing, as Councilor LaPlante mentioned, which is evaluating all city employees.
All positions.
All positions. That's right. Any further discussion?
So here's a moun, uh, moun, motion on the table.
There's a motion on the floor.
Any word?
Motion is specifically, I know how tired you all are, so, um, I'm so glad that, um, that you managed to stay for this, for this meeting, um, but bear with me, there's a motion that has been appropriately seconded after it was modified and modified, and I'd like to call that question now. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Tumi's not here to.
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to approve the reorg, um, with the four previous amendments?
Second.
The, the two-point-seven-four-point-oh-three, business director position change, the removal of the one inspector, the adoption of an evaluation process, and the adoption of the first-year review at the three, six, and twelve months of the process. Um, so we had four basically changes that we talked about, two in council's last motion, one in the prior motion, but also council president, and then my motion. So there's basically four little modifications. So I'm making a motion now to accept the reorg plan as.
Okay, before we do that.
I second.
I just want to ask, before you, before we do that, I just want to make sure that no one has any issue with any specific piece, Councilor Aquino.
Okay. Okay, um, at the committee on the hall, we talked.
Do you want your, my motion to have somebody second it, and then we can have discussion, is that?
But I did second the motion.
I asked that you hold on to the motion.
Okay.
So that if anyone has anything specific, we can discuss that, and then we could adopt the entire plan.
And my question, it's, um, the same one that, um, I had on the committee on the hall, and it was, it was related to the director of, uh, the community of development. The salary, it went from the, and I'm not talking about the money amount, I'm talking about the level. It went from level six to level eight, and it's gonna be taken from a salary-based, salary-based, um, position to a contract position. Um, I'm in favor of all this, but I would like to, I would like the council to have that contract in order for us to make a, um, an approval. We have to check the, uh, my question is, can we have a motion, can I make a motion, like we said?
Madam Chair, may I?
The subcommittee.
Point of information.
Can I just hear what she's asking first?
Remember that this position is gonna be posted again?
Yes.
Okay, and that we have to approve it, and at that point, we can request.
Yes. Can, can I make my motion now to, for us to be able to review the contract, when that contract is available?
We can do that anytime.
All right. I would like to make a motion to review, not only for us, I don't know if that can be put on the ordinance, for the next council to be here, to be able to review the contract in order for them to appoint or vote in favor of any of the director of community development position.
We want the contracts to come with the package that posts the personnel?
Yes, the same way that they post the amount of money that they're gonna be paying for that position, we want to be able to look at the contract and see the terms for that person, for us to vote in favor of that position or that person.
Okay, does, does everybody understand the motion?
No.
No, okay.
Okay, right now, when they post the position, it's seventy-five thousand dollars, how it says here on the ordinance. If you go to page eighteen.
Which one are you talking about?
Page eighteen, on, right on the bottom, says salary. We have a, amount of seventy thousand dollars for that position currently.
Who, who, I mean, who is this?
Page eighteen, and we're talking about the director of community, um, development.
Okay.
Point of information, um, through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe that, um, Council Aquino is actually referencing eighteen to the position of director of commi.
No, she, she wants to.
Has reference in that position.
Wait, I just think, what I'm hearing is that she would like to be able to see any contract that's made with any of the.
Well, we're making a change, right?
Hiring?
We are making a change on the ordinance, and that's part of the change. Like, in order for us, right now, we currently have a number amount when we post the position, seventy thou, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars. By changing that ordinance, we're gonna go by a contract, right, mayor?
Correct.
So in order for us to review what we are proving, before we, um, approve the position, we have to be able to look at the contract and go over the contract and say, you know what, I do agree with this position, I do agree with the terms, I'm voting in favor of this position.
So all of this is worth this?
Yes. In order for us, like, the mayor is the one that needs to do the negotiation, but in order for us to vote for that position, instead of the seventy-five thousand dollars with a contract, I would like to see the contract first.
To, to you, Madam Chair.
Would you mind?
The only thing that I will say is, um, that we're trying really hard to give as much information as we possibly can, but that will always continue, I think more information is better than not, um, but by charter, the council does not have a role with contracts, unless it's a contract over five years.
Yes.
If you wanted to see the contract after it's signed, then we can provide it to you, I just don't want to create false expectations. I did send around the current con.
There are some contracts that.
Personnel contracts I'm speaking about specifically, I'm sorry. So I did send around the economic, the, Ms. Rayonello's contract for people to look at. We're gonna base all contracts off of that contract, basically.
Do you have a point of information?
I, I, okay.
No, I was just gonna say that, that, I, I'm unsure of whether or not all the individuals who are gonna be department heads need to be resubmitted their names for the council for, for a revote, or is it, are we just?
No, they are only.
Just the new.
They're only, uh.
Five.
There's five.
Only five, one, one, two.
I'm just talking about department heads.
Yes.
Which department heads are that?
Your department heads, yes.
Which ones?
There are five positions, you, you have the, uh, the, number six.
Second?
Number six, number seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it?
I don't have it.
I'm sorry, number six, number seven, uh, number twenty-two, twenty-five, oh, I'm sorry, let me give you the title.
Planning director, community development director.
So they're coming before us again, for their reinformation.
Economic development director.
Yes.
Commissioner of Inspeccional Services.
Thanks, so.
We only have one person in a permanent, of all those, there's only one person who's permanent, and that's James Barnes. His name is gonna just, he's gonna move over. Everyone else.
It's gotta come back.
Has to come down to.
That individual's gotta come back before us for that.
People hasn't been down before you.
Right.
And my promise was on the other vote, that she would come back down.
So even Ms. Parks has gotta come before us again.
Correct.
So here's the point that I was gonna make, so now knowing that, our administrative personnel on department heads states specifically, out of the things that are required, number five is to Mrs. Aquino's discussion, the copy of any contract or memorandum of employment which the mayor proposes to enter into with a designee, that also needs to be submitted to the city council.
That needs to be part of the package.
And we'll do it.
Okay.
We'll do that.
Did she say it in the future?
Okay.
It's already here.
Do we have order, please?
That's good to know. We, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
That is important, yeah.
That's good to know.
Um, Councilor Aquino?
We'll do that.
It turns out that, that, that's already in ordinance. So the contract has to be part of the package, okay, that they send down to personnel.
And we didn't know that.
So you'll be seeing it.
But that's good, you'll get, you'll get that. The other piece is that, you, you'll know-
And, um-
It's about the money part of it. The, the, um, the administration, I intend to send down to you the same amount of money that the current position is being paid at, which is ninety-eight thousand on the planning side. We're not gonna, that's what the contract will read, it won't read more than that.
And I, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, to interrupt you, but I, uh, in the subcommittee meeting, we've been, like, this information we didn't have in. It's good to know, but I was told to make this motion at this level, based on the information that we got in the past committee.
That makes sense, so-
Yeah.
If you, again, if it's already in ordinance, it's gotta be done, but we'll take the vote, too.
Okay, and I was told not, that we cannot review the contract, and that was kinda, well, now, in this com, in this meeting, it's good to know that I don't have to make a motion, but it's good to know, not only for us, for everybody, not now, but in the future. Now we're trying to-
Now, Ms. Aquino, you have been making some very, very, very good motions, and we're sharing very good ideas, so you keep doing it, okay?
Thank you.
All right, and Council LaPlante, thank you so much for giving us the formal-
I'll be here all night.
Peace. You'll be around, you'll be around, right?
I'll be here all night.
Okay, um, any more specific?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I also have a point of clarification. You're not gonna make the motion?
It's already in ordinance.
Well, if it, if it's an ordinance, I don't have to make the motion. We're all gonna get the contract when that position is posted, we-
So now that we know, we'll make sure that it happens.
That's all.
Sure. Um, just to point and bring, they said there were six positions that need to be reposted, and it was the planning director, the community development director, the economic development director, the commissioner of inspectional services, and what were the other two?
Oh, that's it.
That's it, just those two?
That's it. The management, something?
Sorry about that. Um, so it's the department heads that are in there now, that currently, that are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, with the expectation that only one of those persons are permanent right now, and that's James Barnes in the Community Development Department. You will not see his name resubmitted because he's permanent.
Right, he's permanent.
And we've done such little things to his position anyway, um, I think all we did was move him. But besides that, um, economic development director, that's gonna be the business and, business and economic development director you, you haven't seen yet, you'll see that soon, um, after this is passed, as well as, um, after we post it, and we post the, uh, the planning and development director.
So, excuse me, does that entail the manager of financial and administrative services? That's an entirely new. Manager of financial and administrative services.
Sue, right? No, it's just a change of na, not even a change of name. That's not new, that's currently exists. It's the administrator in charge of community development. It already exists. Sue Fink's in that position.
So the administrator will be called the manager of financial and administrative services?
I'm not sure we made that change, but if your paperwork says it, then that's the case. But it's just that, if it's, anything, it's a title change, nothing else. It already exists. Sue Fink's in that position.
He's saying that this already exists, the manager of financial and administrative services?
I don't know.
Yes.
And it's Phil?
Yeah, Sue Fink.
Who's the position?
Sue Fink.
Is that Sue?
That's Sue.
That's Sue?
Sue Fink, she lives in the city, she's been working for us for a long time.
She's cool, yeah. All right, um, are there any other specific changes or questions, comments, discussion? All right, so we're gonna go back to-
Second.
Counselor.
I now make the motion.
You're wise guy.
To approve the reorg with the four modifications that we discussed tonight.
Second.
There you go. Okay, we have a motion on the floor that has been appropriately seconded. The motion reads. Yeah, you guys gotta go on.
The motion is to approve, uh, the reorganization as presented with the four amendments, uh, referenced earlier, as the business and economic development director under two, seven, four, oh, three, oh, as modified and discussed. Removal one, uh, inspector from inspectional services, adopt evaluation plan presented by the, uh, by the administration, with reviews conducted, uh, in the first year, thirty days, sixty days, I'm sorry, thirty, uh, three months, six months, and one year into that, into their term.
Thirty days, you wanted to die. Hey, could, could we have a copy as soon as you guys make it official? All right, so is everybody happy? Okay, we're gonna go home soon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Oh, sorry. One moment, please. The mayor wants to say something.
Thank you for, for allowing me two seconds.
Two seconds?
Don't worry, it's okay.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're into this together for six months now, and I just wanna say thank you so much. It means a lot to us that you feel, um, comfortable with the things we're trying to do to make change. I will make sure that we do the re, the evaluations. I will make sure that we find efficiencies where necessary, um, and, you know, downsize personnel as needed. Because I think you're right, some of these things get out of control. Um, we will find, we may not show savings in this addition, but we hope we'll find savings or revenue increase by bringing in more development in a faster, smoother way. The number one thing people talk about our community is how easy is it to go through the permitting process? If we don't get that number down with this reorganization, the reorganization has failed. So we're gonna be all over that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, yes, before we go, I, I do need, Council Monte, would you please make a motion to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much. Now, may I please have a motion to adjourn? Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.